First item on the agenda tonight is our roll call, and I'll ask our town clerk to call the roll.
Don Misselli, Kelly Morrissey, Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Michael Ricchio, Victoria Triano.
Here.
John Barry.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Present. And I'd just like to acknowledge both Councilwoman Morrissey and Ms. Ellie extend their regrets they can't be here tonight. It's tough in the summer with so many people on vacation and different plans, so they apologize they couldn't be here.
Including Mr. Ricchio, he wishes he could be here also, but I'll first also take some of that.
Excellent. Okay, so prayer tonight, Councilman Lombardi.
Lord, may you continue to bless and keep Southington and her people. May you direct and lead this council in all her endeavors, as we seek to do what is right and just for all people. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. And we have the Giving Back Girls in the audience tonight, so if I can ask them to lead us in the flag salute, I'd appreciate it, and we'll be recognizing them shortly. Thank you very much. So moving on, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or any changes anyone needs? Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes pass. Councilman Communication, I'd like to recognize Councilman Pulis, who will give a little introduction to the Giving Back Girls. Councilman Pulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on August 3rd, I had the pleasure of seeing Southington's young ladies in action over at Walmart during the Walmart Salvation Army's Fill That Bus event. It was very, very impressive. Middle school to high school girls shuttling back and forth between the doors and a bus, filling it with supplies that our community people, shoppers, were purchasing, school supplies for kids, with the ultimate goal of filling the bus and then taking that over to a warehouse on East Summer Street, and then filling backpacks for students in need for back to school. And so, just to give a little bit of background about this organization, I did a little research and found that the Giving Back Girls, founded in 2010, over the last nine, 10 years, have just been the recipients of numerous citations and awards from not just this council, but other town organizations and even the state legislature. It was formed by two DePaula Junior High School girls, Erin and Emily Gibney, and they have raised money for Camp Sloper, so kids can attend Camp Sloper who might not be able to afford the tuition. They have collected thousands and thousands of pounds of food for the Southington Food Pantry and other groups. They participate in the Fill That Bus event that I mentioned before. About 350 to 400 backpacks a year they're able to put together with school supplies. They also organize and volunteer at the Ark of Southington's annual Christmas party, amongst a multitude of other activities. And it brings me great pride and hope for our community, that our youth feels this responsibility to give back to others. And I just wanted to take a moment to have the girls come here tonight and be publicly recognized. I want to congratulate them for their efforts and their contributions to our community. I also want to thank and publicly applaud the adults, the parents, the mentors, that guide these young ladies in a life of service. So thank you very much. I'd like to offer a round of applause and call them up for a photo with the council.
I'd also just like to recognize Trish Gibney, who's in the audience. Thank you, your girls started the Giving Back Girls, and I want to thank you for all your efforts, working with them over the years, even after your daughters have moved on. So, Trish, thank you for all your efforts with the Giving Back Girls. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And can I ask all the Giving Back Girls to come up and join us right in front of me here, and we'll get a quick photo to acknowledge you and thank you for all your efforts. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
We're gonna have to squeeze everybody in.
Molly, Julia, Chloe, Mia, Charlotte, Riley, Tom, Remy.
Don't take these back.
Just take a step forward, girls, okay?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, girls.
You're more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like to, you can head out. But again, you're more than welcome to stay, whatever you'd like.
We'll give you a minute.
Thank you all again. We really appreciate all you've done for the town.
Thank you very much.
Great job, girls.
I'm surprised I don't want to stay.
Oh, you weren't talking about the rest.
She can go if she wants.
I saw Kathy stand. I was gonna say, Kathy got up. I thought we were gonna get up with you.
I'll come get her. Might be 10 o'clock. Okay. I'll text you. She just got out of it. She's going with her friend.
Okay, another, just a matter of procedure. Councilman Pulis, if you could, we need to add an appointment to the agenda.
Oh, yes.
For the Calendar House. Nate Wilson submitted a letter of resignation. As we know, he's on the Fire Commission now, so with his resignation, we need to reappoint him. So, Councilman Pulis.
Sure, I'd like to move to add under Agenda Item, under New Business Agenda Item B, a Calendar House appointment.
For number four. Great. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that is added. Okay, Councilman Pulis.
Couple more things. I'm glad there's no Board of Ed members here, because I had instructed my daughter to type her summer essay for the rest of the meeting, and she just skipped out with her friends. So, guess that's on the record now. Anyways, so I had two more items. Historical Society, they are looking for donations for their annual tag sale. That's gonna occur on September 21st. I don't know if anyone here has ever driven by that corner of our town on that day, but they have, they collect a tremendous amount of items, things that people are willing to donate that would work well at a tag sale, and it is their number one fundraiser. The tag sale has funded much of the renovations to the lower level of the Historical Society, which are coming along greatly. So, if, we just wanted to publicly announce, if people have things to donate in your basement, want to clear things out, good condition, please drop them off at the Historical Society on Thursday nights between 5:00 and 8:00. Or if it's something bigger, or just you don't have time to go down there, if you contact the Historical Society, they would be happy to come to your home and pick it up. This is my first time seeing this, but this is the 2019 Historical Society ornament. Thank you, Jack Perry, for bringing that in. These will be for sale for $13, again, at the Historical Society. As we move into the fall, they'll be available at other locations in town, such as SOCA and other local organizations. One last item for Councilperson Communications, the Fire Volunteer Recruitment Committee met on July 16th. Our group, this is a great enthusiastic group, talking about different ways we can promote our volunteer force, recruit more people. We're very proud of our volunteer career force in town. And so, we continue to discuss ideas and initiatives. However, we tabled all decisions and action items, because many of the volunteers on the committee were either called to a training or on vacation, and we felt that it was very important that any decisions being made in that committee include the voice of the volunteer force. And so, we'll have an update. We're meeting again in September. We'll have an update on our efforts at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other council member? Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the last, I think it was last week, there was a very unfortunate situation where a dog was just thrown onto the side of the road in a bag. And it's certainly a crime, animal cruelty. Certainly hope the person, or whoever did this, is found, because it is, in my opinion, so unnecessary. There is resources for people that want to get rid of an animal. It's free. They can call Animal Control, and certainly Animal Control here in Southington, you can call the Police Department, they will help you with an animal. Certainly a dog, they can help you with very quickly. But if there's any other type of animal that maybe they don't, that they don't take, there are resources that they will try to help you with. So when I read that story about that dog, luckily, it was found alive, and it's such a cute dog, to think some human being would think it's okay to just throw that animal on the side of the road in a bag. So, it's a crime, and I hope the person is, is found, because there's just so many outlets and places that you can go to, to place that animal. So I hope in the future, we don't ever encounter such a hideous act like that. The other issue that is coming up, which is very important for Southington, is the census. And why it's so important, it's important for every community, it's certainly important for the community you live in, because, to be counted, affects a lot of things concerning representation through legislative seats, congressional districts. The census also determines a lot of other type of grant programs that are available for municipalities. So everyone in Southington should certainly participate and do what they have to do with the census that is gonna come up in 2020. Which is also another nice resource that our library is doing. On Wednesday, August 28th, everything you need to know about the upcoming census is at the library. It's gonna be on August 28th at 7:00 PM. All your questions will be answered, find out why the census is so important, understand how it impacts federal funding for infrastructure programs and services for each municipality. So I encourage anyone that has any questions, certainly try to attend that event on August 28th. But it is important for people to realize they should participate in the census. So with that, I'm good with Councilman Communications.
Any, Councilwoman Triano?
Yeah, sure. And I'm so happy that, John, you mentioned that about the dog. I will say, the one upbeat thing about it is that all over Southington, people are getting very excited to adopt this little beagle. So I'm sure he's going to have a wonderful life, including, Councilman Lombardi has mentioned it more than once, so. But you're absolutely right, just calling the Police Department or Animal Control, you don't have to do that to an animal. But my, I just have a couple of things I wanted to say. I wanted to thank the YMCA. I had the pleasure of being involved with the Race for Chase back on August 3rd, and it was a great, great day to see all of the children there participating, and just being a part of it. The Y does a fantastic job. It is a triathlon for young people, and they do a great job. The other thing, we, in Southington, we lost someone in Southington this past week and a half, I guess, now, almost two weeks. Kay Davis passed away. Now, Kay was an extremely active volunteer in Southington, so I just wanted to mention her. She was involved in the Historical Society. She was involved with community services. She was involved in the United Way, and actually was Executive Director for the interim while I was there. She was involved in so many activities, the library, actually. She was, worked with the library. So, we lost a very wonderful woman, and just on behalf of the entire town, I just wanted to extend our condolences to her family and her friends, and she will be missed. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member communication? Just one, I'd just like to acknowledge all the groups that put together our Italian Festival. It was, met with great success again this year. The crowds were fantastic. The weather really worked out in our favor, so thank you to all the residents of our community that came out in support of our Italian Festival. We appreciate it. Okay, so moving on, we have a presentation from AMR, and I'll turn it over to our Director of Health, Shane Lockwood, to kick off the presentation.
Thank you. Shane Lockwood, Director of Health, Plainville-Southington Health District, I'm also their Emergency Management Director for the Town of Southington. And for tonight, I'm speaking as the Chairman of the EMS Committee for the Town. The EMS Committee consists of Councilwoman Triano, Councilwoman Morrissey, we have the Police Chief Assistant, sorry, Deputy Police Chief, Fire Chief, Assistant Fire Chief, Dr. Hobart from Bradley, and Lou Perillo and Bill Delavec. So, the, this committee looks at the five, over 5,000 AMR, or ambulance calls every year in the Town of Southington, so they do a nice job. And before I introduce AMR, I just also want to thank, not just AMR, but the Police Department, Fire Department, and Dispatch. For every medical call that comes in, the Dispatch triages it, usually talks who's ever on the other side of the phone, who's usually having the worst day of their life, as they're calling 911 and looking for an ambulance. Our Dispatches do a fantastic job of keeping the situation calm, giving great advice to the person on the other end of the phone, while at the same time dispatching the Police Department to every medical call, Fire Department to some, and communicating with AMR down in New Haven to get the ambulances rolling. So, the Dispatches have a fantastic job. And I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew Rennie from AMR, but I just want to thank AMR. They do a lot more than their 5,000-plus call every year for the town. They're a sponsor at the Apple Harvest Festival, they're at the Sloper Plunge up at YMCA, and I know some of us has jumped into that cold lake, but very appreciative that they're there. And they do a lot more. They're a great resource as Health Director, for me to have them. I constantly look at this, this is a multi-billion dollar national company, and typically, if I'm struggling with an issue to get information, AMR's right there, and they've experienced it. So, I just want to turn it over to Andrew Rennie from AMR, who's gonna talk a little bit about their operation.
Thank you, Shane. My name's Andrew Rennie. I work for American Medical Response. I'm also a resident here in Southington, 144 Eden Ave. I am AMR's Business Development Director and Account Executive of the Waterbury and Farmington Valley Division. I'm also a volunteer firefighter here in town, and I just want to thank the Town Council, Shane, Mr. Showed Up, for allowing me to come and present an important skill that I feel everyone needs to know. A little bit about AMR. AMR has a lot of EMTs and paramedics who come from our residents here in town. We like to employ from within our own communities. We're not just an emergency service, we're your neighbors and your friends and your family members as well. We house ambulances right here in town on Atwater Street, and we staff anywhere between three and eight ambulances in town for our community 24/7. As Shane said, we respond to over 5,000 calls a year, many of which are unfortunately cardiac We've been a proud partner with the Town of Southington, along with the municipal employees, in maintaining our town as a heart-safe community for many years. We also work with the town to provide medical equipment and medications, such as Narcan, at a discounted price because of our purchasing power as a national company. Seventy percent of the 350,000 cardiac arrests that happen in the United States happen at home. Forty percent of those people do not receive CPR. They found that mostly because people, in their understandable panic, just don't remember what to do. Tonight, I would like to go through the two most important steps of CPR. Research has shown that the most important thing in cardiac arrest, when you find a person unresponsive and not breathing, is to, one, call 911, to alert emergency services, and, as Shane said, the Dispatchers that will answer on the other side of the phone, and to push hard and fast in the center of the person's chest to circulate blood. This is all that hands-only CPR is, two steps, 911, and push hard and fast in the center of the chest. Those two steps help to strengthen the chain of survival for someone in cardiac arrest. If anyone's interested in learning more about hands-only CPR, or any other medical questions, you can always contact us at AMR. You can find us at amr.net. And this Apple Harvest, we're happy to, once again, be a sponsor of the Apple Harvest, and we're gonna have a booth at the Apple Harvest, where our EMTs will be teaching hands-only CPR to the residents. So anyone can stop in, learn hands-only CPR, and learn this important skill, so that more of our residents can contribute to being a heart-safe community. Up on the front table, there is a little pamphlet of how to perform hands-only CPR. You can bring that home to your family members. But again, call 911, and push hard and fast in the center of the chest. I've brought a CPR mannequin. I'm just going to show the skill.
Now, Andy, do you sing when you're doing it?
So, I, I try not to sing while I'm doing it, however, if you've heard of the song "Staying Alive," that is the, the age-old, perfect rhythm for CPR. They tell you to push between 100 and 120 times a minute. There are many other songs, but "Staying Alive" is one of them. Ms. Triano, if you would like to sing while I perform, please feel free. I know, I know that you do sing. So, we determine that the person is unresponsive. Are you okay? Are you okay? When they are, when we determine that they're unresponsive, and it doesn't appear that they're breathing, first, call 911 to alert emergency services, and then, with your two hands, normally this would be done on the floor, but for viewing purposes, two hands pushing in the center of the chest, one, two, three, four, five, and we continue to push hard and fast in the center of the chest until emergency services arrive. This will help strengthen the chain of survival for that person, and hopefully, with your efforts, we can save more lives within our communities, within our homes, and wherever else we might find an emergency. Thank you very much for your time.
Seriously, though, is it below the sternum that you're pressing?
Right in the center of the chest. They have, they've modified it to make it easier of where to, so as long as your hand is right in the center of the chest, you're, you're compressing the heart enough to circulate the blood.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you also for your efforts in town through AMR. Please extend our thanks for everything they do.
I will.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to reports of special committees. First committee is the Apple Harvest Festival Committee. A couple announcements for that. First of all, I again want to announce, we are still actively seeking sponsors for this year's festival. If interested, please reach out. Melissa Kokosa is our sponsorship coordinator, or certainly you can get in touch with Dave LaPray, who's our Director of Recreation and Festival Coordinator, that can put you in touch with Melissa. But if anyone's interested in sponsoring, being one of our sponsors for this upcoming Apple Harvest Festival, we again would anxiously welcome you to this, this year's festival. I'm also pleased to announce that we are sold out of all our available booth space, which is a good problem to have. We actually have a waiting list right now. There's about five vendors on it, just in case some space should free up if a vendor can't make it, so there's a waiting list. They're being kept in order, so we can add other people. But that's great, the popularity continues to grow, and to know we have a waiting list, we try to get everyone in, but unfortunately, we can't guarantee it, because we're at capacity. And finally, we had mentioned at a previous meeting that we are continuing, a couple favorites that were brought in as part of the 50th anniversary last year. One was the Laser Light Show, which we're continuing the first Friday evening, and the other favorite from last year that was introduced is bringing in a national act. So we are continuing to do that again this year. This year, our national act will be a band from the '90s, some of you may be familiar with, called the Spin Doctors. So they will be coming to the Apple Harvest Festival on the second Saturday, which is October 12th. So we're very excited to announce that, and look forward to a great turnout to welcome the band to our town.
Can I comment on?
Sure.
So, last year was the first year we had a band, a national band. I didn't even hear of that band, and I heard it was packed.
It was packed.
And people loved it, and it was so well-attended. But I actually have heard of the Spin Doctors.
Yeah.
So I can just imagine how busy it's gonna be, so it's, great job.
Last year's band was, was from the 2000s, this year's band is from the '90s, so it's a little different demographic, but I think it's gonna be great, and we're gonna welcome a lot of people to our festival.
Councilman Barry, I think Chairman Palmeri and I have a reserved spot for you, right in front of the stage, for the Spin Doctors.
Absolutely. All right. So that's all good stuff. Moving on, Farm Heritage Committee. We had a meeting in July, and I'm pleased to announce a couple things that are going on. First of all, I'm very excited about this. Hopefully, some of you have driven by the farm stand that is on the corner of Berlin and East Street. That was work of our committee, and I'd especially like to thank Ed Pocock III for his charity, charities donation to allow us to secure the building material for that, and all the people that work together, including some students at the high school, to help finish that farm stand. I'm also pleased to say, we are actively using that farm stand. So if you haven't driven by there and seen the banner, Leaf is using that every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, selling produce right from here in town on their property. So please, if you're interested in some locally grown produce, stop by and support Leaf. Again, that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, right at that farm stand on the corner of East Street and Berlin Avenue, the former Graski property. With, with that introduction about the former Graski property, as a result, thank you to our press for running a story from previous meetings about the activity of the Farm Heritage Committee. And with that, we actually have a local farmer that's interested in doing something on that property. So he reached out to the town, we have been in touch with that farmer, and it's gonna come to our next meeting, so we can hear about how he's maybe interested in doing some work on that property, which is great. We want to try to maintain as much of the farming history we have in our town. And finally, the last thing we discussed is, and Councilman Pocock has taken the lead on this, we just updated about our various hang contracts in town. So that was basically the gist of our July Farm Heritage Committee meeting. Any questions on that?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair. So, at the next meeting, this local farmer is gonna come and speak about?
The next Farm Heritage Committee meeting. Mm-hmm.
And then, eventually, it'll come back to the council as to what was discussed. Are we gonna?
Sure.
Can we get an update after the next Farm Heritage meeting?
Sure.
That program, as it relates to that other report that we saw a few months back?
Okay. Sure, no problem.
So, you know, is this, is this local farmer gonna wanna supersede what was discussed in that other plan, or, you know, let's, let's try to open that discussion again?
Yeah, absolutely, not necessarily. The only thing really on that property, really, that was kind of up in the air is the barn. The only thing really on that property, really, that was kind of up in the air is the barn. And I don't know what he wants to do until we hear the presentation. So, absolutely, which, that's why I reported tonight, because I thought this was great news, and we didn't know that information at the time. And obviously, as a result of the press, someone saw, a local resident saw, and reached out to us, so we're happy to entertain those conversations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions related to that committee? All right, so, moving on to Public Works. Councilman Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works Committee met on August 1st. Very lengthy agenda, as we usually do. We went over multiple engineering projects that are in the works. We are still getting updates on the expansion of the rails to trails, which would proceed to the Plainville Town Line. We also talked about the Jude Lane and West Street intersection. That is hopefully going to be completed by the, hopefully, by the end of October of this year. We're also working on granting rights of ways and other Department of Transportation-type of permits over concerning the Marion Avenue-Hummasim Brook Bridge replacement. That is ongoing. And we also are, also had discussions concerning the Spring Street Bridge. So, nothing new, really, to report on those issues, but they are moving along, and engineering is working on obtaining all the necessary approvals and state reviews and things like that. We also talked about the Plansville Safety Improvements. The Water Department has completed the upgrades to the water mains, and this is in anticipation of the Plansville Safety Improvement Plan, which is slated, hopefully, to start next year. So, we also had a informational hearing concerning the Plansville Safety Improvements. We invited all residents of Southington to attend. All the property owners were notified. We did have one or two interested parties at the presentation, but that is moving forward. We do anticipate to have a presentation, hopefully, sometime this fall here at the Town Council. The firm is working out details. So, the council will be continually updated on that very important project, and it is being paid majority with state funding. So, that's very beneficial to our taxpayers here in Southington. We also talked at great length about the road projects. We, as many of you know, or maybe some of you don't know, the town, after the last election, we no longer are using the process called chip seal. We have received some correspondence. People were complaining about it from projects that were done probably several years ago. But, just so everyone knows in the public, the chip seal is not something that we are presently using here in Southington. We also started using a new vendor for our road projects. We're very happy to have Tilkot back in Southington, and they have been working on numerous projects here in town. So, there are, some of the projects are still ongoing. The curbing and apron work has to, has to still occur. Restorations, meaning the grass seeds and new loom in areas are also, still have to be done. But, we're very, so far, the Highway Department is very pleased with the work that's been accomplished. And we also talked slightly about the pavement management, but I will let the town manager in his report talk about that at greater length. I don't know if anyone has any questions on Public Works? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, that concludes our special committees. We're moving on to the town manager's report. So, I'll turn it over to, I almost said attorney. Well, you are still in town. The town manager showed up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is the Board of Finance minutes. We had two major things that I wish to discuss. The first one is, as you know, we are starting to close our fiscal year 1819. So, what we had is, we had a report from the Director of Finance, which is our first look at where we finished off. Our current estimates, and like I said, our final won't be till December when our audit comes through, but our current estimates look like we're going to be about a neighborhood of $1.4 million in the plus. And let me briefly explain how we got to that point. We had some very positive things on our revenue side. Property taxes were about $900,000 above. Interest on investments were about $800,000 above. Kathy and her crew brought in $200,000 more than anticipated in the town clerk's office. That means economic development's bringing in this stuff. As you also recall, we used over $1 million in fund balance in last year, so we have to put that back. So, putting that all together, we're approximately $900,000 in the plus for revenue. We also are about 1.7 less expenditures than we anticipated currently. So, if you look at those together, and we're going to come to you, and the second item I'm talking about is going to be the carryforwards. The carryforward's about $1.2 million. So, if you look at the entire thing, it's about 2.6 in the plus, 1.2 in the carryforwards, which is going to be money that's in last year's budget that's going to be spent in this year's budget. It brings us to approximately 1.4. That's very good news. Obviously, with $150 million budget, it's, we're in the 1% range, which is very good news. Like I said, that number is going to fluctuate a little bit between now and December when we have the final audit. But, the Board of Finance was very pleased with that, and I hope the council is also.
Thank you very much.
With that in mind, the second part of it is, and I know we do this every year, the carryforwards, which I know you already saw, the town is asking, and the Board of Finance unanimously approved, the carryforward of $660,000. And with the second year now, the Board of Education has also asked for a carryforward for the same reason, to do capital items in their budget year of $590,000. So, if you add those two together, that's the number I was talking about, which is reduced by the $1.2 million. That's how we got to 1.4. So, those are the two things we did in our first of our series of closeout Board of Finance meetings, so I'll behalf of you ask you questions on that.
Any question? Councilman Dzik?
So, is that the only accounting option you have? Or is there, is there an option B? You know, you take your carryforwards, and then you have your surplus. Is there anything else you can do with the monies?
Well, the monies go into undated fund balance, which is going to be used in this coming year's budget. Because, remember, we have $1.8 million of undated fund balance, which was going to be used in this year's budget also. So, similar to last year, that's what it's going to be used for. And, as I mentioned to the Board of Finance, with the support of the public this November, we hope to use, with this board, obviously, has already unanimously agreed to that, if it happens, we hope to use 2.9 million of that with the purchase of this building, assuming the public says we can do that.
Is the split, is it basically pro rata based on the budget? Or is it actual savings on certain items? Like, so, would it not be pro rata if you're going to apply certain savings to the town side versus the Board of Ed? Or are we just saying, you know?
No, it's not, it's no pro rata. It's the money that's remaining in the Board of Education budget that, instead of wanting, instead of buying a bunch of things which they could do to buy down their budget, they want to do, and they started this in the last couple of years, where they have capital items that they want to purchase in this fiscal year. So, it's the same thing that we do on the town side. We have budgetary things and capital things that we have to offset the reduction of our total budget, and therefore, the mill rate we put into next year. Board of Education is doing the same thing. So, we, that has not been done a lot, but the last two years, they've been doing that. This year specifically, this board voted, and the Board of Finance voted, that under the statute, we allow the Board of Education to 1% of their budget as a carryforward into the next fiscal year for capital items.
We don't have to, though, right? That's just?
No. The Board of Finance and this board have total jurisdiction. You can simply say, no, we're not going to do that. I spoke in favor of it, and I still speak in favor of it, because, like any department, I'd rather have them carry it forward to next year for specific capital items than buy it down. So, I'd rather do it that way.
What was, I'm sorry, one more, my final question.
That's okay.
What was the, so, what was the final Board of Ed number?
$590,000, but we're going to look at it again in September, and we may add a little bit to that.
Okay.
So, just, just, last year, if I recall correctly, with the Board of Education, that was the elevator and the security and the security cameras?
And, yes, and they also did that. We did the two things. Number one is the elevator, et cetera. That was done through our capital program.
That's right.
They also added money into it, to the tune of about $280,000, $290,000 of fiscal year 17, 18 money into this year.
Right. Okay. Ms. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for the town manager. We spoke about this at length last week, but I think it's important to address the council on the procedure for these monies next year. The Board of Ed money just doesn't go to the Board of Ed. It's going to go through a certain process that you explained.
Excellent question. What happens is, it's very similar to my department heads, where the money is put into a specific fund, which first comes, the request comes into me for a specific item of capital. I then submit it to the Board of Finance, and then it comes to you, just like it would be my, one of my departments. So, there's, obviously, this board gets to look at everything that the BOE wants to buy, just like this board looks at everything my departments want to buy.
Thank you.
I think the system is going to work well for us in the future.
Any other questions related to this subject?
Before I move on, Mr. Chairman, I just want a little bit of housekeeping. Could I ask someone to make a motion to add contractual matter to executive session? I have real estate, and I also need the contractual matter with you, too.
Okay, so, does anyone object to that? Okay, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to add contractual items to executive session.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one follow-up.
Let me just get, let me get a second. Is there, we have a second now discussion about this?
No.
Okay. Just to be clear, there will be no action after executive session?
No, actually, real estate or contractual.
Okay, so, there will be no action after executive session tonight? So, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, thank you.
Just a question that came to mind when he moved on, about the $590,000 from the Board of Ed money, that could be used to pay for capital expenditures. Are those items in their next year's budget? So, they'd be moving them out of next year's budget and then using the leftover from this year to pay for them?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. They could be in their capital budget, which isn't funded yet. They could be using it, instead of funding it with, it's all town money, but instead of funding it with internal money or asking the Board of Finance for an appropriation, they're trying to do some of their list. If you look in their budget, you're going to see their own capital lines, the things they want to do, so that's some of the things they want to do.
So, we'll get a list of all those things before we?
Well, they're going to present the list to the Board of Finance, and then, as each one comes forward, it's going to be in the Board of Finance minutes exactly what they're asking.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the town manager before we move on?
Next item I have, as Mr. Barry mentioned, pavement manager. I know I went through this entire thing a month ago. It wasn't two weeks ago, it was a month ago at our last meeting. As you know, the plan moving forward is to start spending some serious bond money for our roads. As I mentioned, our goal is to get to 10 or 12 miles per year on the roads, and that'll require some bonding, which will require referendums starting with 2020. With that in mind, I want to be in the position, obviously, to advise not only Mr. Barry's committee, but also the council and the public in general on how we're going to spend that money, what roads we're going to spend it on, and why we're spending it on those particular roads. So, that's why I'm recommending the pavement manager system, and this went through interview process, and I know that they reported to Mr. Barry's committee, but our superintendent of highway parks is recommending Street Scan for $46,216, which is already budgeted.
Can you also, just, I know I already, we already talked about this, but for the public's sake, can you just enlighten the public on the last time this was done?
I think it was 2000, 2012.
Okay. So, it hasn't been done in a while. It's been about seven years, and it's important to note that when we're asking for that much money through a referendum process, we want to make sure we're being responsible and spending it wisely. So, it has been about seven years, and it's important to update that before we ask for such a large referendum next year.
And with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, instead of getting the library up and down, because I'm in the middle of their two things.
Okay.
I'll take care of snow and landscaping now.
Sure.
The, I hate to do this, but we put out the bids for snow and landscaping for this year. You have the recommendation from the superintendent of highway parks, and I'm happy to say that it's a Southington company who is going to be handling the work. So, that's good news.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
I got a quick question. Did preferred bidding ordinance come into play on the bid process for that?
The law was Southington, so no, it didn't come into play.
Okay.
That would only come to play if I had somebody from another town, but yes.
Okay.
With that in mind, if there's no further questions, I'd like to introduce our library director to handle the Barnes Museum veranda roof grant.
Okay.
Then, I believe her chairman will handle the other one, so.
So, while she's making her way up to the podium, thank you, Kristy Sadowski, who's our library director, for being here. I'd also like to just acknowledge, because the next two items relate to our library board, so we have Kevin Curtis, who's the chair of the library board here, Walter Grover, the vice chair, as well as members Mary Ellen DeAngelo, Joanne Kelleher, and Val DiPaolo. So, thank you all for being here. Did I miss anyone on the library board? I think I got you all. Okay, thank you all for being here. We'll turn it over to you, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Curtis for the next presentation.
Thank you. I am here to report on the status of the Barnes Museum, and the veranda roof and the decorative railings was found in 2017, that those railings were deteriorating and causing water to come into the museum, damaging both the structure of the building and possibly a little bit of the interior. So, at that time, we worked with the Connecticut State Preservation Office and received a survey planning grant, where we have had design plans drawn up for exactly how the repair should be carried out. At this point, I'm back this evening to request permission to apply again with the State Historic Preservation Office for a historic restoration fund grant. It's a 50% match. We have the remainder in our trust fund to repair the veranda roof and the decorative railings. The project, we did go out to bid with those estimates, and we're waiting to secure the funds before we commit, but with that, we estimate the project to be, with contingencies, $120,000. So, this would be permission to apply for $60,000 of that.
Excellent. I want to thank you and the board for really, not only finding an alternate source of funding through the grant process, but also using your reserve fund to help pay for this, because obviously, it's very important and needed. But, thank you all for thinking outside the box and coming up with a way to fund it appropriately.
Sure.
We appreciate that. Any questions about the Barnes roof? Mr. Lombardi?
I do have a question. Is there any stipulation in the grant that says if the grant is awarded, the town must match the funds to get to the $120,000 estimate?
It is a reimbursement grant, so we will submit all our receipts at the end of the, at the end of the project, and then they will reimburse 50% up to $60,000.
So, doesn't the town funding have to be approved before they can apply for a grant?
It's?
Or, I don't know who this question is from.
It's from a fund that she, she has.
Oh, so, the money's already in place?
Correct. That's what I was just saying.
What's going to happen is this, let me backtrack a second. What's going to happen is this, is that we get, we get a letter from the state saying that the grant is available, and the grant is there. We then go to the Board of Finance, open up a line item for the grant, we spend it, and then get reimbursed. So, if she has $60,000 from the trust, we're okay with the letter, but we need an actual letter from the state saying the grant is approved for $60,000. I'll run it through the Board of Finance, and we'll establish a line item for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to the Barnes roof?
Actually, could I mention one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
I'd like to thank Kristy, I'd like to thank Mrs. Secando. I ate too much, but it was a fabulous day at Taste of Southington. You guys did a great job in your board. We all, I'll tell you, that's the biggest crowd I've ever seen, and your singer was much better than I thought he was going to be, so I'll leave it at that. But, thank you for that.
Thank you. We enjoyed the event as well. It's great to see so much of the community.
Okay, so, with that, we'll move on to the recommendation for the library architect, and I think Chairman Curtis is going to give us a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, before Chairman Curtis starts, I just want to say a few words on this project, if I may?
Okay.
First of all, I'm really excited, very excited that we are moving forward with the discussion about a new, updated library. I want to say this has been like a decade-long process, and I want to definitely send out my appreciation to the previous director, the previous boards of the library, for the enormous amount of work they did in conducting how we should move forward. There was multiple focus groups, multiple individuals were part of different groups talking about what they want to see in a library. And I believe the previous firm that did present plans was a top-notch firm, a firm that is recognized as an award-winning firm that has done some amazing libraries throughout the country. Now, tonight is the first step. And in a lot of ways, there are several steps to get to a completion. The first step is, in some ways, the most important step. And when I look at our present library, it's not conducive to how libraries function today. The library that we have is a library that is so outdated and so not what libraries are about anymore. Now, many people who don't go to libraries maybe think our library is great. And our staff and our director do a great job with what they have. But libraries are much more than what your grandparents might think a library is. Libraries are a place where people can come together, different political opinions. And you don't feel judged, you feel safe. It's a place where people have forums about as interesting things as bird watching or architecturally landscaping. So libraries have become community centers. Our library, the way it is architecturally designed, is not set up for that. So I'm excited that we might move forward to have a modern library. What's important about a future library is also the vision. What libraries are going to be in the future? You know, one thing you have to remember, back 100 years ago when they had libraries, they were architecturally significant. Libraries were looked upon really in a way that they wanted to have a building that was a statement. And you look at the Historical Society, that was our original library. And when you go into that Historical Society, it is architecturally significant. It is still a building that you go into and you're like, wow, this is a pretty building. It's it's got real good bones. So I hope, as we move forward, that we go forward with a plan that takes, we hire people that have a vision of what the future is. What are libraries going to be in a decade, two decades? You know, I've served almost two decades on the Connecticut State Library Board. I have a lot of passion for libraries. I'm one of the longest-serving chairmen of the Connecticut State Library Board. And I want the very best library possible for this town. Now, I'm concerned that we have a box that our present library is. It has no architectural significance. It's actually, in my opinion, ugly. Now, there will be going to be people that say, it's not. But I'm telling you, there is no architectural significance about that building. So I hope, whatever we do, whatever the future is, that we move forward in a way that's going to give people an option. We should poll the people of Southington through a referendum and have the very best possible library we can and say, what kind of library do you want in Southington? Because when people know what libraries stand for today and what libraries can be, we are missing out in Southington. So I hope no one twists my passion and my dedication to have the very best library in Southington. I understand it could be very expensive. But I don't want to be part of a town that does not, well, I I will be part of a town even if they don't want to. I feel like if people are educated and understand what libraries can do, they're going to support a referendum. They're going to say yes to a library that is that is just going to stand the test of time and be there architecturally significant, go in that library and be in awe. So I hope we're moving forward and I hope we do it right. And it's the first step. It might be a very important step. It's a long process, but I look forward to be part of the discussions and how we do move forward. So thank you to the library board for all your work. You're all volunteers. You do a lot of lot of good work here in Southington. Our library is is so important. And people are very supportive of education facilities. Libraries are education facilities. So I believe the people of Southington will support a top-notch library. And I hope we can get one to referendum sooner than later. So thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Okay, with that, Chairman Curtis, we'll turn it over to you.
Did everybody get the packet of information I emailed out last week? I have a few printed copies, if anybody?
I'll take a printed one.
I'll take one too, actually, if you have it.
Yes, I looked at it.
Thanks.
That was with the scorecard? I looked at it.
Yeah, thanks. On behalf of the library board, I'm here tonight to request that the Town Council approves the firm of QA&amp;M as the architect to design concept plans for the next Southington library. The town budget this year allocates funding for this process. And when the library board looked to move forward with this, we wanted to include as many people in this process as possible. We thought it was best to form a planning committee that would look at architectural firms, look at the initial plans that they come up with. And so we wanted people with various backgrounds in municipal projects like this, referendums, people who had hired architects before, people who were familiar with libraries. So we assembled a group that was chaired by Joanne Kelleher, a library board member, and also serves on our library advocacy committee. Another member of the planning committee is Erica Byrne. She's a strategic, she does strategic planning and consulting for libraries across the state, most recently working with South Windsor Public Library. You'll hear from both of them in a minute. We also had Dave Donnelly serving on the committee, retired Realtor, and worked on the Bread for Life Building Committee. Jack Perry, local business owner and someone who has gone through a building process for buildings for his own company. Ed Pocock Jr., who was the Chair of the Middle School Building Committee, also serves on the Board of Finance currently. We have Steve Judas, who works for Harry E. Cole Company in town, works very closely with a lot of architectural firms. He did not serve in the selection process of QA&amp;M because he does conduct business with so many firms. But he was aware of all of the different architectural firms that we were going to interview and approved all of them, thought they were all good choices. In his place, Keith Hayden, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer, participated in in the interview process. Kristi Sadowski, Library Director, attended the interviews, as did Walter Grover, Vice Chair of the Library Board, and myself. To tell you a little bit about the process, the interview process, I'm going to have Joanne Kelleher come up and speak to you a little bit.
Thank you. So as this planning committee was being organized, because the current budget allocated $35,000 to hire the architecture firm, the library director did not have to go through the RFP process and was instructed to start identifying a list of firms that we could identify. And so, as you may know from her hiring, she does have experience in coventry from developing a library in that town. And so she reached out to both the firm that she had worked with there as well as a firm where the project manager she had worked with had moved to. She also reached out to Maxine Blauwies, an associate. And she is a a library consultant who gave some additional recommendations. All four of the four firms were then reviewed by the Town Public Works Department and approved to move forward in the process. The four firms were then invited to come in to give a presentation to the planning committee. They were instructed to bring a bid with them for the work that was to be provided, to come up with a concept design plan, cost estimates for the building, and providing support to the community by attending meetings with the planning committee, the Board of Directors, and in the future with the Town Council. And so all four firms requested and received tours of the current library from the director. While these tours and this communication was going on, the planning committee met a couple of times. One was to bring all of them up to speed with the current issues around the library. There are issues around fire code and ADA compliance. And we also worked to put together some evaluation criteria. And so in your packages, there is a set of sheets that looks like this, which has the questions that we came up with and the five things that we were going to rate the libraries on. We then met with the four firms over two nights on July 29th and the 31st. All four of them gave presentations. All four of them had time for questions and answers. And all four provided bids which fell within the $35,000 range, which is really no surprise because that number was publicly published. At the end of the second night, all of the attendees discussed the firms and basically had a straw poll where we agreed that QA&amp;M should be the company that we selected. We came out of executive session and voted unanimously, the people who were on the planning committee, for that selection. And so Erica is now going to come up and tell you the reasons why we selected QA&amp;M out of those four firms.
Good evening, everyone. So why did we choose QA&amp;M? We spent, you know, eight hours probably, all of us together in the caucus room back there interviewing the different architecture firms, hearing their presentations, having them answer questions. And we really came out of that process unanimously supporting QA&amp;M as the architects that we recommended to the Library Board of Directors. So the first reason why we chose them was that they really had the most comprehensive and responsive presentation, which demonstrated to us the ways in which they will be willing to work collaboratively with both the planning committee, advocacy committee, library board, staff, and the town as a whole, including elected officials, as we move this process forward. They spoke clearly about how they planned to address the needs of the town and also had significant respect for the town. That was one of the things that they mentioned several times, was respect for this community and for the resources that we would be putting into a new library. They discussed the importance of a design that was in harmony with its neighbors to the with the Historical Society that Councilman Berry referred to before, as well as with Darrenowski Elementary School across the street, as well as looking at site design from pedestrian and vehicular perspectives. They clearly understood budget concerns and provided examples of how they could work with the existing building if that was became necessary. And also talked about how they incorporate cost analyses to create efficiencies in terms of staffing and long-term operating costs, which can be some of the biggest long-term costs that come out of any new building, is how are you going to staff it and how are you going to operate it? And they were very clear on how how they take that into consideration. So as I said, based on their presentation style, the planning committee really thought that QA&amp;M would do the best job working with the community. They were very, they made things easy to understand for people who didn't have as much building experience or people who didn't have as much library experience, to really walk us through what their process would look like. And that process, I believe, is outlined in the packet, where they talk about month by month what they would be doing. And they were very enthusiastic about the idea of educating the community about what a library can be, what the designs would look like, getting people's feedback. And also, they have the ability to do 3D renderings, which really helps for people to imagine what a new library space would look like. QA&amp;M was also the only firm who brought the entire team that we would be working with in this process, including the principal, project manager, senior architectural designer, interior designer, and production specialist, who is actually a Plansville resident and a library user. So they definitely have that commitment to the town by having a resident on their team. The second reason why we went with them was looking at their reputation of the firm. So QA&amp;M is the sixth-largest architecture firm in Greater Hartford. They've managed multiple municipal and school projects that reflect similar design principles is what we're looking for in a 21st century library. So for example, they worked on, they they did the design for the Creck Museum Academy in Bloomfield, which reflects a lot of hands-on learning elements that are present in today's libraries. They also worked on the New Britain Community Education Center, which has many gathering and classroom spaces. And the Handle Performing Arts Center at the University of Hartford, I don't know if any of you have driven by it. It used to be a very kind of rundown-looking industrial space. And they won awards for their adaptive reuse of that space. It's gorgeous now and really shows this expertise in active learning. So all elements that are key essential parts to libraries. They also, in 2017, merged with a firm called Smith Edwards McCoy, which has done work for many years specifically around educational institutions, other large cultural arts. I actually had the privilege of seeing the end result of their work on the Wildsworth Athenaeum, where they worked on a five-year, $33 million project to renovate several of the gallery spaces in that building that has that has been done to great acclaim there. And then finally, the way that they had some kind of project-specific elements really spoke to us. Their project manager and their senior architectural designer are both up to date with current library design philosophy. And they were actually the best able to answer questions about past library design trends that have not aged well. They also were able to anticipate the design and space usage elements that had been brought up to me by the library staff. I had the privilege of spending a day meeting with about, I think I met with 16, library staff members, to talk to them about how they use the current space, what could be improved, what they would be looking for in a future space. And without knowing any of the answers to those questions, QA&amp;M addressed those elements in their presentation. The project manager has strong experience with writing state library construction grants and with the submission process, including communication with state library staff well before the grant is due, to make sure that everything is really in line with what the state library is looking for. And she was actually part of the team that rewrote the space, the library space planning guide in 2014. And then finally, their office is located in Farmington. And we know, based on the experience of people who've worked on other building processes, that having the architect, the architect and the architectural firm close by is a real benefit to the project. So I'm going to hand it, I'm going to hand it back to Kevin. Hand it back to Kevin.
The planning committee brought their recommendation to the library board at a special meeting on August 5th. The library board asked a lot of great questions about the process and feeling confident in their answers unanimously. The library board unanimously approved recommending QA&amp;M. Quickly, I'd just like to thank everybody who's been helpful in this process. Mark Shoda for answering questions, Keith Hayden for stepping in at the last minute, the entire planning committee, our library advocacy committee, and the library board. So again, I'd like, just like to request that the Town Council approved QA&amp;M as the architect to design the content, concept plans with a bid of $33,000. And if you have any questions, I can try to address them.
I just have one one question that I know I emailed you about it, but I can ask to share it with everyone else. And before we do that, just to be clear, which I know I also shared and so the library board knows too, it's not on the agenda for action tonight. As you can see, we're not, this is an important decision for us and we're shot short on both ends of the aisle here. So the presentation was tonight, give us time to digest the information. And then hopefully, it'll be on the agenda for action at our next meeting, which will be the first meeting in September. So there won't be any action tonight, just just to make sure everyone knows that. The one thing I'm just curious about, because you you mentioned that QA&amp;M had vast experience with specifically libraries. But looking at their website, under their projects, it doesn't even list libraries as one of their, and there is, I don't know, 12, it says K-12 Schools, Affordable Housing, Community, Arts and Culture, Commercial, Healthcare, Historic Preservation, Religious, Multi-Family Housing, Higher Education, Residential Recreation. But I don't see libraries there. So I know you said they have a vast experience with that. Can you just elaborate on?
Well, they they gave us examples of libraries that they've worked with, Mark Twain Public Library. And a lot of these were in conjunction with school projects as well. So that might be where some of that overlap is.
Might be, okay.
But a lot of municipal building experience, flexible use space, which would be part of a new library, you know, space that could be redesigned every few years to meet the needs. So we felt those skills really spoke to what we were looking for.
Okay.
I just have a comment. Actually, we were at a public works meeting. I was sitting next to Councilwoman Dawn Micali. And Keith Hayden had mentioned that the library committee or the board, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, mentioned that you guys had recommended a firm. So I, Dawn and I asked Keith, I go, what firm? And we immediately went on to their website. And they did not have one library listed as part of their projects that they've completed or working on. So then, which was kind of odd that they would even make it to a finalist. I mean, I've never heard of a a library committee interviewing a finalist that doesn't even have a library listed on their website as they're a part of. So going further into information, the Connecticut State Library keeps a list, about 43 different companies that that are, it's just a guide. I mean, town and communities can hire anyone they want. And this firm wasn't even on the state library list. So kind of unusual. I'm just surprised they made it to a final. And the other thing is, on the library construction projects, there is listed Groton. And I guess they did do something in Groton. But according to the construction project lists, it's a code remodel and maintenance project. So I guess I'll have to just get more information. One of the things, as a member of the council, it's oversight. One thing we've learned in this community, when you pick the wrong firm, it becomes problematic. And that happened with elementary school projects back in my early days on the council. So there's no question the firm is a large firm. They're a good firm. I think they've done a lot of good. done a lot of good work throughout the state, and I don't want to, I'm not knowledgeable enough about the firm because I don't really see many library projects. Now, if you are gonna talk about the projects they've done, some do look really impressive. I, I have to, have to say they do. So maybe, you know, projects that weren't libraries, you liked what they presented, I'm not sure, but I just, I'm just, I'm glad we're not acting on it tonight. I have to get some more information, feel more comfortable with this vote. One thing I've learned is the first step is one of the most important steps when it comes to a project, and it's kind of unusual that the firm would be finalist when they really aren't known to be big in the library world. So that's just a commentary, doesn't mean much, just, just a statement.
Yeah, I mean, I hope everybody can, I'm sort of glad we have time to, to look through this. Again, as I said in the beginning, I want to get as many people involved in this process as possible. So hopefully, in the next few weeks, we can all work together to answer some of the questions you have and to dig a little deeper into some of these projects, if you'd like. You know, I think the thing that stood out for me, and again, you said this has been a really long process, this, trying to get this library built. What sort of swayed me during the interview process was the respect they had with the town and how sincerely they wanted to work with the people of Southington to create something that was right for us. You know, you can design the most incredible building, but does it really fit in our community? You know, will it serve the purpose we want it to? So I really felt that this firm will work with us and the entire town to get what's right, because that's, in the end, what I want to accomplish, the best library we can get.
Yeah, just a comment and a question. First off, thank you to the members of the Library Board for, and the staff for your hard work on this. Obviously, you've put a lot of time and effort into scoring these firms. I too look forward to some follow-up information. One thing that I don't see in here, and these renderings, these pictures are very impressive, is something that I've spoken about to other members, previous executive director and other members of the Library Board, that I think is, is something that we should deeply consider. And that is to have our library have some sort of revenue-generating component, like a Barnes and Noble-style cafe. I don't see any of that in here. But my vision is that we have a space in the library that we lease to a local entrepreneur, and then we get more than a dollar a day for a video or 10 cents a day for a book of revenue in monthly that actually makes people want to go and hang out at the library. We want to bring people in, like John said, it's a, it's a community center. We want to create an incentive to go there, a desire. I think that'd be pretty neat. And also, a large space, I'm sure that's in here, that like organizations auditoriums, like the Mark Twain Library in Hartford, auditorium-style space that people would be compelled, organizations would be compelled to rent out, to increase revenues coming in so that you could fund your programming, fund additional staff, fund the things rather, and I think it'd make like a referendum more palatable to, to the residents if they say, "Wow, this is like an innovative way to do this." So I don't know if you're going back and forth with these folks, but I'd like to see that in a design firm, some sort of like vision for what that might look like. I think that it's, it's a, it's a way to go. But thank you for your work.
It did come up during the interview process with these firms, did you want to?
Yeah, no, I was just going to add, and I think Councilman Barry can probably speak to this, I don't know of any libraries that have a significant revenue stream from having a cafe in this space. It's something that's been tried many places. It's just, they, no one has cracked that nut yet there. And to your other point about the auditorium, one of the things that I think everyone who's part of the process is in agreement on is having a space that would be able to hold a large community group, that would also have the ability to be shut off from the rest of the library, so it could stay open after library hours. So that's definitely something that's, that everyone is thinking about. But people definitely want food and drink, but we haven't figured out the getting anyone to come in and make money off of it or give money model yet, so.
Counselwoman Triano has? Yeah, thank you. I want to thank you, Kevin, and the rest of the folks that have been working so hard on this. And as we're asking questions, I want to be clear that, that I'll just put my neck out and say that I think everybody here is anxious to get the best library we can. So there's, just because there may be questions, it's not, it's not critical questioning. It is wanting to get together to make the very best we can, and you have done so much of the groundwork already. And so we, I personally look forward to reviewing all of this and looking at the specifics that maybe we can have a further discussion on. And I'm glad, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna take a little time as breathing on this, and so we can get, if there's individual questions, we can ask, and, and we can go forward with it. But, but I believe we're, we're pretty well united, and of course, there's always maybe somebody who's not, so I apologize to that one. But I think for the most part, all of us are wanting to get the very best library, as you do. So we're united in that, and I, I don't want there, just because questions are being asked and concepts are being tossed about, it's not being critical, it's really trying to just question things, just to, to look at stuff and, and talk about it. So thank you so much for all your work, I really do appreciate it. And I wanted to say, Kristy, you have done a great job in educating the community as well, because I went to one of the workshops that you, that you've done, and, and other members of the library were there, and Erica, you were there, and it was wonderful. I mean, I learned tons of stuff, and we're, we're in good hands, our library's in good hands. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of you and thank you. And just, let's keep the process going for a couple more weeks until we can get together with a whole, with a whole council. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So in closing, just to echo everyone's thoughts to the Board, fortunately, we do have time. Not only do we have our traditional two weeks in between meetings, but we won't meet again until the beginning of September, so we have a little bit more time with no second meeting in August. And also, again, our plan, as we all know, is hopefully to move this forward for a referendum for next year, 2020, not 2019. So thank you for, for all your efforts with this, and, and I'm so glad we have enough time to really make an informed and best decision for the community. So thank you. Oh, Councilman Lombardi.
Yes, can I just make a brief comment? Thank you to the Library Board, I think everyone said it already, but I do want to share the experience that we had with the Calendar House that, in my opinion, was very favorable. Before the in-depth plans came back to the council, they came, very simple, they came with three options. They said remodel the building, knock down the building, there was three different options in front of us. And after we, we voted on the initial, initial plan, if you will, then the architect went back in more depth. I thought that was very helpful with the Calendar House, so that's just my opinion. I don't know what the other councilors feel, but I just wanted to share that with you.
I just have one comment, and I'm really not even gonna address you folks, because I think your, your vetting process actually was really good, looked at materials. Problem I have is, is anyone surprised that we came up with $33,000 for a bid? We telegraph our bid, and then we get the bid. So the question I have, that's a lot of money for a project that then has to go through a referendum. So could it have been done for 23 if we didn't telegraph our bid? I don't know the answer. Is there a way to prevent that?
Well, I have to go do a budget process, and I'm, I'm not the Board of Education where I could just do one number, I have to do a line item budget. So my line item budget has specifically had a, for this, and was $35,000. After sitting down with the Public Works Director and the Director of Operations for the BOE, they all felt that 35,000 would come in, well, about $35,000, because that was a fair figure, so it doesn't surprise me that it came in around that number. But remember, it's still a sealed bid, so someone could, you know, if it was 20-something thousand dollars, someone still could have committed 20-something thousand, thinking that everyone else came close to 30. Answer your question, can I keep it? No, I can't. That, that's a budgetary number, I cannot do that.
I think Mr. Dizik makes a good point, it's a logical point. Firms know what's in the budget. That's maybe something we could work on going forward, because I think he, it's a legitimate point. I'm just curious, did all the bids come in around the same price? Yeah, so they, they kind of knew what was allocated, so they're gonna, you know, and this is not something that's actually the little bid, because it's professional, but I think it's a good point, maybe that's something we could work on. Excellent point.
More than one firm said that the amount that they quoted us was less than what they would have usually done before.
Okay, well, I guess it could work the other way too. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you again, we appreciate it. And again, we're, hopefully, we'll be in, Chairman Kurt, we'll be in touch, and hopefully we'll have this on the agenda for our first meeting in September. Okay? All right, so with that, we are, that concludes the Town Manager's Report.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So moving on, Town Attorney's Report, Attorney Futner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just very briefly. I have been working with the tax assessor on what we have five pending tax appeals in the, in Judicial District. We've attended pre-trials. We did get notice a couple weeks ago that Judge Levine, who has been one of the toughest pre-trial judges, who's very efficient at settling any case, but most notably municipal cases, has retired. So those judicial proceedings are unfortunately on hold right now, but we're looking forward to the judicial branch with their upcoming judge assignments, which comes at the end of August, and hopefully getting those back and rolling. That's all I have.
Any questions for the Town Attorney?
How many of those appeals are residential?
I don't think, they're all commercial.
All commercial appeals?
Yeah, it does make a lot of sense.
So do we need, so does the town, is the process on the town side, so do we need to establish a commercial appraisal to walk into the pre-trial?
Well, it's not a full commercial appraisal, but we do look at the lease and, and all the typical things you would look at.
So you don't, so, so the town doesn't have to incur the expense of a personal appraisal just to walk in front of a judge with me for pre-trial? You don't have to do that?
No, you do not have to do that.
Okay. That's good.
But we definitely don't anymore, because Judge Levine is not there.
Okay. Any other questions for the Town Attorney? Okay, so with that, we'll move on to Public Communications. So the microphone is now open for any resident to speak. We ask residents to limit their comments to five minutes and begin by stating their name and address for the record. So the microphone is open, absolutely.
Good evening. Paul Mazicaro, 71 Glen Eagles Drive, Southington. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I came here primarily to support the library's request to begin the process to start designing a, a new library. I had forgotten that John Barry was chairman of the State Library Board, and I just retired recently, and I came, my last job was Chief Administrative Officer for the Westport Library, and we just finished a, probably 11-year project when it, when it first started, but we just finished two years' worth of construction, renovating while we stay in place in a three-story building, a $21 million renovation. I don't intend to compare Southington to Westport, of course, their library's a 501(c)(3). The town committed $5 million, and we raised 15 to 16 million to finish the job. But I would encourage you to take a look or to read about other libraries that have just finished renovation, because Councilman Barry, and to a certain degree, Councilman Poulis, hit the nail on the head in terms of what's going on in libraries today. There are much more community centers, and Southington needs, can use one, there's certainly a need here. The library, to me, is an embarrassment after seeing some other libraries that are out there. It's long overdue. It needs more space, it needs different kinds of spaces, and everything should be flexible, because what we know today, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, I don't think we can predict what kind of space we're gonna need. So that's one thing I think we can clearly all agree on. I also noticed that the architectural firm didn't have a thing on its website about libraries. That doesn't really concern me too much either. They looked like they had done good work, and getting a good design is the most important, so the amount of money you spend now, I think, may save you a lot of money later if they do a good cost estimating on what the final design that's chosen is gonna cost. That's much more important, and the more work you do in the preliminary phase, getting consensus and what have you, it's gonna be much more important. So I just came here to say I support the library, I hope to get more involved, and now that I've retired and I have more time, because for two years, the construction was, you're working 50 hours minimum a week and all the time, so now I have a little bit more time, and I want to pay back some of what the state gave the town of Westport, a $1 million grant, and we appreciated it, and hopefully the town is gonna get that. There's usually a deadline on the time to commit, the town to make a commitment to get that million. I can't remember if it was two or three years, maybe you remember, but I know we had asked for an extension, and hopefully Southington will, the money will still be there when Southington's ready to make its commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents that would like to speak for Public Communication? Okay, last call before we close Public Communication. All right, thank you very much. We'll close Public Communication and move on to Old Business. First item on the agenda under Old Business is Action on the Board of Finance Minutes, just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, great. Item B, Action on Pavement Management. We heard the manager talk a little bit about the process and the recommendations, so I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion to approve the pavement management recommendation as outlined by Mr. Shoda.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously as well, thank you. Action on the Barnes Museum Veranda Roof Grant.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the authorizing resolution allowing the Barnes Museum to apply and receive, not to exceed $60,000 upon approval, that would be a matching grant.
Excellent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Just again, thank you for coming up with the funding for us and trying to secure some state funding through a grant process, we appreciate it. Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, a roll call? Sorry, it's a grant, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Poulis?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Dizik?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that passes unanimously, congratulations. And finally, under Old Business, Item D, Action on Snow and Landscaping Bids.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve SM Lawn Care, per the recommendation of town staff, for the snow and landscaping bids.
Okay. We have a motion to approve SM Lawn Care, right here in Southington. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously as well. Moving on to New Business, Tax Refunds Tonight, Councilman Dizik.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds, as itemized in the Town Council Packet.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Lombardi, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes. Moving on to Appointments. First is the Ethics Board, two members, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Triano.
Yes, we would like to reappoint Andy Mead and Attorney Bill Weber to the Board of Ethics.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. C, three members are up, I'm looking for a motion to reappoint the three members that are currently serving, including Ed Pocock III, our Town Manager, Mark Shoda, and our Economic Development Coordinator, Lou Perillo.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint those three members.
Second.
And we have a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Water Commissioner for a four-year term, we had a resignation.
That's off, off the agenda.
Oh.
It's off the agenda.
Okay.
You have, you have the old agenda.
Okay. So moving on to then Item Three, the Calendar House Appointment. We had a resignation, as Nate Wilson is now currently serving on the Fire, as a Fire Commissioner, so I'm looking for a nomination.
I'm very excited to get someone new involved in our, our different boards and commissions. I nominate Jessica Potrupka-Arsenal. She is, I'm asking her consideration by the members to be a member of the Senior Citizen Commission. Jessica is a healthcare professional, she will be dedicated to ensuring Southington seniors are heard.
are heard, have access to affordable local services, and continue the good quality of life we have here in Southington. She brings over 15 years of experience working with seniors and veterans in healthcare, starting at her family pharmacy, many remember Plansville Pharmacy in downtown Plansville, they were there for decades. So we're happy to have her as a member of the senior board. She also has experience with Hartford Healthcare, VA Healthcare Emergency Room, and is presently with Pro Health Partners as a nurse practitioner in a skilled nursing facility. Jessica lives here in town with her husband and their two children, and she also has a golden retriever. So we're really excited to nominate Jessica and have her involved here in our different boards and commissions in Southington.
And I couldn't be happier to second that for Jessica. She's a tremendous woman, she will serve our seniors very well.
And certainly has a great resume for that position, which is excellent.
Yeah, because she's never served, I wanted the public to see how involved she is in her job and what a great asset she'll be. Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Just for clarification, is this the Calendar House Board?
Yes.
Or the senior board?
It's the same thing.
Same thing?
It's called the Senior Citizen Commission.
Senior Citizen Commission.
But it's the Calendar House.
AKA known as Calendar House.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry for the miscommunication, but it's basically the same thing. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So now I'm looking for a motion to adjourn into executive session, excluding the public and the press, but including the town attorney and town manager. And we're discussing real estate and contractual matters, and there will be no action outside of executive session this evening. So looking for that motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.